A volunteer firefighter for Baldwin City. He then got a job with the Douglas County Sheriff's Office in Corrections. And then he came to us wanting to serve in a community he grew up in. So he gets ready on Monday to go to the Academy of K H E T C. And we're very proud of him, but I wanted to come introduce him to you all before he left.
Adonis, welcome to Baldwin City, or at least officially, welcome to the staff of Baldwin City.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service and I'm sure you'll do a great job.
Thank you. I am a very happy to have the honor to come back to my hometown where I was raised and try and make a difference every day that I can, so.
So one question I have for you, did he yell at you before he came in to speak?
No.
I want, I just want the truth. No, we do. We appreciate your willingness to serve our community. Uh, we have an excellent police, police staff and force and so thank you and welcome to Baldwin City.
Thank you, sir. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very proud of you, Adonis.
Thank you.
Next, we have from our hearing ordinance one, five, two, zero Maplewood, R H I D request. And the applicants are here, so if you want to stand up, introduce yourself.
Well, you've seen me several times through this process since the city applied for the M I H grant received it. This is Michael Burns, no stranger to Baldwin, very vested through the Auburn Pharmacy and we're the owners of Confluence and if things go well tonight, in about thirty-one days, we'll start making Baldwin a better or easier place to find and a place to live.
Can you explain just because we get so many requests and different things, explain your project again.
Sure.
What it is, just so the public can.
Maplewood Place will be a four town home style duplex multifamily. Homes for rent, uh, they'll be between Ames and Washington, um, on the, right now it looks like a large lot, but it's essentially just the back half. They'll be for rent and it's in the, the city applied for and was granted the M I H, the median income household project. People often consider or confuse that with a low income project. That is not what it is. Uh, median income is what it sounds. You have to, uh, be within sixty-five percent of the median income or up to a hundred and fifty percent of the median income. And there's a table on K H R C's website, cause every time you add another member of the family or unit living in the, in the place, the, that number grows. So what we found is most towns, it's almost everybody, um, in the town that qualifies for the, uh, income requirements. There'll be three bedroom, two bath. Uh, I don't know how far you want me to go, but, uh.
Whatever the council wants to hear, I guess. I'm not, I'm not a voting member, so they get to ask whatever questions they can.
Yeah. So in our business, it's very difficult to find employees in, in smaller towns and finding a place for them to live. And I certainly don't want to stop Mike from speech, speaking, but that's why we started down this road was from a selfish. We have a pharmacy here in, in Baldwin City and, uh, since COVID, things have been hard to staff and even harder to find a place to live. And we don't want just any place. We want to build nice housing that people can afford. And we've studied the Baldwin, um, housing study. This is what it says you need and, uh, so therefore that's what we're seeing need, fill the need.
Council members, questions for the applicant?
I guess one of my concerns would be is since it's, I know it's not low income housing, but it's median income housing. And it's, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it would be roughly about thirteen hundred to sixteen hundred dollars for rent.
That's correct.
To, to me, that is on a very high end for a town home and I, for people in this community. I don't know if we would, if that benefits our community, um, in that price range. Because I think that's might price out a lot of our community members.
Fair question.
Okay. You know, I believe Matt's concerned us too.
Yeah.
Cause we need to get these things rented. You know, going way back, we just completed some units in Garnet, Kansas. Those rent for fifteen twenty-five a month. They're very nice units. Everyone said in Garnet, there's no way you can get fifteen twenty-five. Uh, half of them were rented before we got them completed. So, uh.
And we have a waiting list.
And now we have a waiting list, but even in Garnet, and we've heard it here, where we try to bring employees in and there's nowhere for them. There's just no available rentals. But for example, even though you, you have the limits, a pharmacist with a couple of kids is eligible to stay in these. And in fact, not every unit.
No, no.
Is out of the, out of the eight units, there will be five that have that income restriction. But even within those five, you could even be at a pharmacist salary with a couple of kids and still be eligible to stay there. Once you're eligible, you come in, if you continue to make more money, that doesn't mean that we have to make you leave. Once you come in and you're eligible, you're, you're able to stay. But at that rent, is that a concern? Yes, but at construction cost, that's why we appreciate you all supporting this project with the R H I D. Because without it, if you think it's tough at sixteen hundred a month, imagine how difficult it would be to rent these and make these things work without it. So, but yeah, that's a concern, but I think, I think you're going to be surprised at how many people are looking for units like this. And, uh, and again, it's going to, you know, open up where people, we hear from school districts, they have teachers that are, that want to come in. Well, they're more likely to retain them when they can get them to live in our community. Uh, we've talked to even the, obviously the medical community who are involved with them. They, they have issues with the same thing. Maybe people then have to commute in. Well, then eventually they take a job somewhere else. We want to have this opportunity for people to live and work here in Baldwin so that we can keep them.
So, and you guys are already getting a grant, correct?
The city of Baldwin applied for and received the median income household grant, yes.
And so you're already getting five hundred thousand, right?
I believe it's four fifty.
Okay.
At completion.
And you know, little history on the property, I don't know if you all know, but years ago, myself and three other business owners went in to buy it. And, uh, and we've held it for all these years. And so, and, and because it's been difficult to justify building something. And of course, you know, the state, we've got, they've got a project that we hope gets completed because then you, the state needed, uh, in order to align the intersection. They needed part of the front of the property. Well, we did get paid for that, but it also, a big part of the value of that property is a commercial. So now we're down to where we think we can probably only get one, one business on the front. But you know, what do we do at the back? So we've sat on this thing and so, uh, but that's kind of the history of the property. We've owned it for a long time. But we're pretty excited to break ground, get something done with it. Uh, I think you're going to see these units are going to be very nice. And that's why even for the money, when people see them, these same type of units, uh, just in, in Gardner or not too far up the road. They're renting for twenty-one hundred, twenty-two hundred dollars. So I think when people see the value, while it may seem a bit high, uh, we, we hope that we're going to see the same response here that we did in Garnet.
So what's the, um, with your M I H grant you're getting? And then let's say hypothetically, you were be, to be awarded RID from the city of Baldwin. I guess what would be the rent difference? Because you're obviously doing the project. I mean, you're received M I H. I mean, you're not going to turn away four hundred and fifty thousand.
We cannot construct the project without both. Part of the RID process, we turned in a, a budget of the operating costs and expenses. Uh, that was, I think, two meetings ago, uh, without both of these, they don't flow. So without it, we would turn down the M I H grant.
Because we would be then even more concerned, uh, Mr. King, on what we would have to rent these for. Because if you figured out the monthly property tax, that would have to go right on top of the rent in order to make them cash flow. And so that's, that would be directly right on top of it. And we do think that that would probably put us out of the price range where we could keep these things rented.
And how long is your RID request for? How many years?
Twenty-two and a half, I believe. And that, that it's your standard.
It's your standard R H I D.
Well, I mean, you can go anywhere from up to twenty-five years.
Yeah, I think we did, I think it's twenty-two and a half in here. I would have to find it in the paperwork. That's what I believe it is.
So, um, I don't remember the, the, um, drawings of what the apartments are going to look like. Um, are they like two-story? Are they slab? Are they?
These will be.
ADA compliant?
Yes, part of the M I H process, they have separate, they're more, um, more stringent codes. ADA zero level entry. Uh, these are three bedroom, two baths, slab upgrade. Uh, one of our design elements is a, is a covered porch for the back. It's very popular with our residents in Garnet. Yeah, the, the additional requirements for, uh, energy, uh, are part of the M I H process. We have to do, I believe, our forty-two insulation and, uh, I believe twenty-five sear is the proper term for the H V A C.
Basically everything we do, you have to spend a little bit more money. You have to make them more energy efficient. You have to make them ADA compliant. So all that costs a little bit more, but we, again, we feel it's worth it for, for what we're getting. Um, but, but, uh, you know, the, the design of the units, uh, we, we believe there's going to be plenty of green space, which is exactly what we did in Garnet. And I own a fair number of other townhomes. These by far are the nicest townhomes that we have. And, uh, and again, with the, the covered, that's why we call them villas. Because there, there's something different than what you typically see when you see the covered area in the back. Cause people today, they want to kind of live outdoors. And so that's expensive though, because you still have to have the roof, you still have to do all those things. But it just adds that unique element where people can be in the back. Typically, when you see your average duplex or townhome, sometimes they don't even put a door on the back. And if they do, the door is flat, there's nothing covering, it's exposed to the weather. You have a little concrete slab where you're sitting right there to your neighbor. I own some of those. I won't build any more of those ever again, now that I, we've been doing these. These are really, really nice. When people come in, uh, they, they really like them. I think you're going to be very proud of them.
Yeah, our porches are on opposite sides, so there's like a separation of space.
Yep.
You don't have to hear your neighbor's barbecue.
Yeah. Thank you.
Is this the final step for the city for the R H I D process for this project?
Yep. If, if this is approved, we would, uh, aim to start construction in about thirty to thirty-five days.
But you'd have to wait for the county and the school district.
They have thirty days to respond.
To essentially veto it, right?
Yeah, they're, the county and the school board have power of denial. They have, they decide they want to do that, they would have to hold their board meetings and decide to do so and then file it and then it's over.
What is the total cost of the project?
Believe it's right at three million total. Again, that was when we bid it, when this process started. If you're in construction, you know, that's like a revolving door. But yeah. That does not count land cost either.
Any other questions for the applicants? All right. I guess there's no other questions. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Stu, did you have anything on this or no? Okay. Any other public comment to this agenda item? Anything else? We'll close the public comment section of this agenda item, open up council discussion.
I mean, I just have the obvious concern that, um, you know, the, the whole idea of the rural housing incentive district is that it is, it is an incentive to get new rooftops. But I feel like for twenty-two years of, uh, of, uh, a loss in property tax to the city. When they're already getting such a big incentive from H I D is, is just a, I, it feels like a double dip concern for me.
And that's kind of why I asked some of the questions I did, because that, that was kind of my concern as well. Can I ask a follow-up question to him?
You guys can ask whatever questions you want. It's council time, so.
If, is, what would be, if we were to approve, what would be the minimum amount of years you guys could do with the RID?
Agreement, so R H I D is a very specific process.
Okay.
We have been through it all to, this is the last meeting. If we alter the agreement, we have to start over. That's why we have four meetings to lead up to the final one is to work through those.
Hmm.
Uh, if essentially if, if it's, we can't build the project without R H I D, the cash flow does not work.
Well, I, I, I understand that, but like, but twenty-two years is a, that's a big concern for me. Um, kind of with the same, what Corey said about, I mean, that's twenty-two years of property taxes that are, you know, that our community isn't getting.
It's true, but it's also eight families living.
And I, and I do.
Money, putting kids in schools and.
And I understand that and I know housing is a huge need for our community. I, I, I get that and, um, it's. But the twenty-two years is, that's kind of a sticker for me.
Another thing I just ask you to keep in mind, you talk about years that you're giving up. Right now, if it's not built, we're not going to get the property taxes anyway. And we've sat for a lot of years waiting for an opportunity for the state to even have this available, the M I H. That's why they've sat there, but that's why you don't see these units going up. Because the numbers just don't work without these programs. And you probably know that the state now, they're, they're cutting those programs back. We don't know that they're going to be there again. This is kind of a.
Yeah, M I H is over.
Yeah, it's over.
I think this is the last year for M I Hs.
That's right. So if, if we don't get them, I don't know what we're going to do with the property, to be honest. But you know, we've had that for what? Seven, eight, nine years? It's been a long time. And so if we don't, you know, we might sit here five, six, seven years and yeah, I'm still sitting on the property. I haven't gotten to develop it. But you know, now we're still five or six years without the families that we would have in town. And we still don't have any property taxes on them, but it's a good point. I understand that, but right now we're not getting anything anyway. I think it makes sense for us at least get started into those years. And to where someday then we will be paying property taxes, but we have those units full. But again, I just come back, there's a reason why you don't see a lot of this go on. It, it's just not viable without these two programs, but M I H is going away. So if we can take advantage of it between us and the community and, and get this vote passed and get us to breaking ground. Then we're good to go. Otherwise it'll, it'll not happen. And M I, M I H goes away.
Yeah. And there is a other vehicle that people use in smaller counties, which is the K H I T C tax credit. But because of Douglas County's size, we can't use that. It's sixty thousand, I think, maximum for the county.
Yep.
And so we don't qualify. That's why we have to have the R H I D and the M I H to make it work.
Any other questions? You might have to get up again. I don't know. I never know.
I don't have any.
I guess Jay's done for now.
For now.
We're not doing it anyway. I think, I think it's using the tools that, that are available from the state and local government to provide the housing is a, is it something you should champion? It's a, it's worked great for us in Garnet. We brought in, you know, Garnet's much smaller community, a little harder to attract people to. We brought in seven of eight units, people from out of state that would have never lived there.
Or did they have the same program in Garnet that we have?
Yeah. Baldwin City has used R H I D three times that I know of.
Yeah.
Um, I have not reviewed those agreements, uh, but same reasons we need it. And yes, Garnet had never done it before, but they went through the whole process, just like you have.
Did you get M I H in both those?
Yes, yeah.
Cause this mirrors Garnet is what you're saying.
If you drove down to Garnet to Cleveland Street and looked at them.
I'm saying the programs, the programs, the years, the amount of M I H, everything is a mirror image of.
Documents.
Garnet.
Uh, full transparency, we did get K H I T C in Garnet that we're not getting here.
Right.
Because again, in Garnet, our average income is less than.
Yeah.
In law, less.
You were able to get all three in Garnet.
Fewer people.
Yeah. Oh, you were able to get the.
Yeah. All three makes a project work. In what a normal banking environment would consider where their debt service coverage is acceptable. Where we don't have K H I T C here, it's, we gotta have the R H I D or it doesn't work.
Oh, and I know Mike, uh, you might disagree with this, but, um, Baltimore's worth the extra investment.
That's why we're here.
Yeah, I mean, it's adding rooftops. I mean, I, I get it. I just, um.
I think you guys are good. They'll call you back up. Trust me, they don't hesitate.
No, it's, I mean, it's, it's everything that RID's designed to do. Uh, this is just the first one that we would approve where there was another funding mechanism, uh, another public funding mechanism. Whereas all the other ones, I believe have been just straight up, this is the one, this is the one leap that we need to make to get more rooftops. So I'm just, it's just unfamiliar.
I think one of the reasons.
Go ahead and say, we have, we have live streams, so citizens are at home watching.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think the other RID projects you did were all for sale.
Correct.
This is the first for rent. Yeah, that is a difference. When you have RID for sale, developer gets paid immediately for the funds and they pass on that RID savings to the, to the, which is a huge incentive for the buyer. But they're, they're settled out. We're owning it and operating it. And this is what, this product is what your housing study said you needed more than anything else. And it, get on Google, try to find something to rent in Baldwin.
We actually seen it.
We called our property manager who's been in it for forty years. And I said, hey, what are you managing in Baldwin? He's like, never been able to manage a single thing in Baldwin. And I, I thought that was strange, but then I Googled it myself. There's, it's tough. So that is a major difference with the types of projects you've done in the past and what we're doing.
So is there an H O A with this?
No. We're the owners, we're very responsive. Chris Seigen of, uh, National Property Brokers, I think is the company name. He's a, he's a broker that lives in Gardner, but he manages a lot of property down Ottawa, Garnet. This is kind of his stomping grounds. He's very good.
So there's no, um, maintenance or anything else?
We provide maintenance.
The whole outside is maintenance provided?
Yes.
How about?
Yeah, lawn care, yeah, if something's wrong, Chris, he, he takes care of it.
Okay.
Yeah, this is.
It'd be essentially like our senior housing.
Might be interesting.
You have seven units now.
Just, just additional, I, I'm also chairman of the Garnet Housing Authority. And as part of the reason why we entered into this project in Garnet. We have over twenty people on a waiting list to get into some of the units and even those that are unsubsidized. And they're, they're a two-bedroom, two-bath there in Garnet off of Park Road. Those rent for fourteen hundred a month. Rent has not been changed in twenty-four years. So twenty-four years ago, those units were fourteen hundred a month. Imagine that. That's why they're a little difficult to fill back then. But we have a twenty-person waiting list for the villas. We also have about twenty people on a waiting list for what we call the garden apartments. They're one and two-bedroom apartments, but they're still very nice. We do have some HUD housing, which we have made some major improvements there. Uh, we had four, to average fourteen open units. Uh, we had some leadership change. I came in, we now are completely full on the HUD side with the waiting list there too. So we have a rich history of recognizing what needs to be done. And, and part of that in, in doing our project in Garnet was darn it, I saw that we, we had a, we had a need, um, for, for housing. And, uh, and boy, they, they filled rather quickly, but yeah, you're going to see these are very nice. I'm very proud of, of, of what we do. I want to drive by and say, yep, you know, that's one of our properties, but that's why we do lawn care. I don't want to have to worry about somebody not mowing the yard. In our leases, while we don't have an H O A, uh, we are pretty particular. Our leases, uh, are able to say how much can be in their yards and how much can be in their driveways. Yeah, cause we want them to be nice and clean and, uh, something that the city can be real proud of. Yep. Good question.
So I get, I got one more question now, um.
Hold you. Hold you.
Okay.
No, well, you said something where you said your rent hasn't gone up in twenty four years on those ones.
On on the Housing Authority.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And and they're still fourteen hundred, but they were fourteen hundred twenty four years ago when they built them. And so, but when you said, hey, you might be interested, and that was what I looked at. If we had people, a twenty people waiting list in Garnet, Kansas. Now, it's fifty five and older at the Housing Authority, okay, at Park Plaza North. And uh, we didn't, we didn't have that as a stipulation. We have a fair, in fact, about four of them are probably over sixty five.
In Cleveland.
Uh huh. Yeah, you know, but we, but we do have some other younger families there. Uh, one, one couple even came from Canada. He is actually the chip plant manager over at the airport in New Strong. But he chose Garnet because of the units. So um, I I I think we'll see what what we have, you know, be able to bring those people in and 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 again, we are pretty. Uh, we have a lot of restrictions in our lease is what I'm gonna say to make sure that we keep those um, up to the standard that I think we're all looking for.
I will say there is no restriction against age in the units. The original MIH was intended for working class families. But the income requirement is the only thing, and that's only a move in. As he said, once you moved in and met that requirement, you can stop working and make zero money. We still can't remove you. And I, yeah, it seems to be a very popular product with the uh, community that's aging. Because of the maintenance and how nice they are.
So does the rent go up every year?
We have not raised rents.
That would be, that's a great question, Julie, because that would be one of my other concerns, just. You know, with it already being supposedly thirteen to sixteen hundred. You know, if you start raising, if it is on that high end and you start raising the rent, then we're. We might be pricing a lot of our community out of it, but. But like I, like I've said before, I know we need the housing. I know we need the rooftops. I think we're all in agreement. We need more housing in Baldwin. And um. So.
I would say that to and to try to address that question best I can. Nobody can guarantee tomorrow for maintenance costs, et cetera.
Mm hmm.
Typically, you would think new units, you know, we've got a warranty period with our contractors, et cetera. The biggest thing that raises rents is taxes.
I have a couple just follow up questions to that. I mean, so. Does RID then allow you to control the increase, the amount of increases you would need each year? Having RID versus not having RID, because.
There's no restrictions.
There's no, there's no bearing on that.
I get it, but as the property owners, if you're not, if you're receiving RID and you're getting your property taxes. Essentially abated back to you, wouldn't that then help control the increase in the rent per year over year?
I I think what you're asking, does it reduce the potential need to increase?
Correct.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's what is important. Is is we can get in here and not have to worry about what we're gonna do in two or three years. Because again, our maintenance should be nil to none for our first few years. We don't have to worry about property taxes and property tax increases. So no, that certainly incentivizes us to keep those rents low so they can keep full.
In all of our other units, the biggest factor in raising rent is taxes. And that this eliminates the largest factor. Can I guarantee forever? Of course not. No one can, but that would never be our goal. Is to raise anything.
Do you guys allow pets and different things as part of your lease?
You really can't be a landlord these days without allowing pets.
I want to be honest, I'm a, we uh, in fact, the flooring, we put all of them now. We we come with the LVT. I used to do carpets. So I'm a carpet fan, but we now put the other flooring in. Because yes, it seems, especially after COVID, everybody has pets, even your retired people have pets. So it's become a necessity. So we're kind of making these very pet friendly.
Yep.
Where you you have the the flooring that you can put down carpets and if something happens, then you take your carpet out.
We don't, we don't do fences in the yards.
Nope.
Yeah, we don't do fences.
Nope.
But yes, pets are allowed.
One other question, um.
Allegedly.
So one concern I had, and I just looked at my notes and found it, um. How would you guys stop uh, parents of Baker students coming in? And renting these and then letting their kids live there during the school year? Because then that would take away. From, I think, from.
That's a great.
Community members actually benefiting from this instead of Baker students, because I I know most of them live on campus, but there are some that. Let that rent duplexes and all that stuff.
I got this one.
So I I that was another concern is how do we keep from Baker parents coming in and swooping in and getting these nice ones for their kids?
Or he's excited to answer this, but I want to ask, because uh, I mean, look, I I just had my youngest daughter come back home after. You know, renting in in Lawrence. And let me tell you, she was the best tenant they could ever have.
Are you saying that she didn't come to Baker?
That's all right. She went to KU.
But 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 I think, I I think I want to make sure, so what your concern is that are we seeing where parents come in, sign the lease as though they're going to be there? But in reality, they're not. They allow the students. I know what Bert's gonna say is our leases strictly prohibit that?
No, actually I have more. There there are regulations on this.
Okay, but we have names on the lease. We have to know exactly who's going to be there.
Yep.
And if we find out that other people are are living there, that's when they would have to either leave. Or we would terminate their lease and they would have to go. But he's obviously got something more.
So, full disclosure, we had, we had applied to MIH three times for Baldwin. We received a phone call at our first application that Baldwin had an MIH project that. Wasn't in compliance, so they rejected our application.
Yep.
Then we applied again. The project wasn't complete. They don't typically award two in the same town until one's done. So follow through is a huge factor with these projects and your reputation with the state as a city. Baldwin was a concern for our consultant because of exactly what you asked for. This is not student housing. We do have to get audited by the MIH people. They have the right to come in and audit our records. And yours, because you are the applicant. Student housing is a no no for MIH and. He he had a great answer because that's how we police it, is if we find out that someone does that, they gotta go. Because it it would put us in trouble with with MIH regulations.
And I just want to clarify your your answer to that for people that might be listening is that project he's referring to was the tenants to homeowners project. I believe those three houses that were built over by the golf course.
Uh, yeah.
Were under MIH and they their project stalled for.
I'm not speaking ill of.
Yeah, no.
But that, I didn't know that project was there when I put.
Some of the terms you used, I just wanted to clarify. That um, so that was, that wasn't the city's doing, that was that property owner that stalled that project.
The developer was not in compliance. It had nothing to do with this. But yeah, there's regs against it and we have a.
Okay.
Mechanism in place to stop it.
Well, that's, that's good to hear.
Any other questions? Jay?
Not as of now.
All right, thank you, guys. Unless you have anything to add right now.
Jay, you sure? Honestly, guys, we we appreciate this because I think it's a lot about expectations. You know, I have my pharmacy here, have family here, family in the area. It's a lot about expectations. And so I would rather you ask all those questions to make sure that we both meet each other's expectations here, because if we can do this, we're both gonna be happy and it's gonna be successful for the community. So I appreciate it. I do.
Yeah, I'm just giving them a hard time. Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Yep.
Any further council discussion? Jay, you need some water?
No. I already drank all that on Sunday. Um. I guess my biggest thing is is. We need the roofs because we need more housing and we've heard our community say we need more housing, more housing, more housing. And. But the. The twenty two years of the RID, just. Of the no property taxes, does the eight house, the rooftops. Benefit outweigh the benefit of. Giving up the property taxes for twenty two years. I mean. That's what I'm, that's what I'm struggling with. I think it's a great project. I do.
I have the same, I have the same concerns. I think that what what's kind of eased my mind on that is the fact that it does somewhat restrict who can be there and the fact that. That it's, it cannot be college kids. It has to be, you know, it's aimed towards blue collar workers, people with kids. That is the exact kind of uh, folks we need. To improve the school district as well as the city. So that's kind of the part that made me feel a little bit better.
And I I I agree completely with with that.
Does it bring in more people living here to contribute to sales tax?
Yeah, and those are all factors that weigh in.
Yeah.
And, you know, maybe it does bring. Three, three of our teachers in the school district from Lawrence or Gardner to come live here and. You know, or people that are working, like they said, um, that are commuting and maybe we make them permanent residents. And I think that's great. So, um. Julie, do you have any more opinions?
I think it sounds like a great uh, program and like you said, we need more housing. Um, you know, we're, we're building all these new houses, but we don't have any. Smaller things that people can rent. And, you know. I I'm, I'm for it. I I think it's, I think it's a great thing for the city to have.
I apologize. I got one more question.
I told you.
Sorry, things just keep popping into my head. I I apologize, but I'm trying to do.
I thought we had a motion.
I I I'm sorry.
And Jay, Jay, before you go there, you know, when you talked about, think about where that's located, because that's what we thought.
Mm hmm.
How perfect for educators to be able to live right down the school and to have families where your kids can get out and walk right to the school.
Mm hmm.
That that led part of us to think, you know, rather than maybe look at uh, uh, making the whole thing commercial.
Mm hmm.
We looked at that, but then we looked and said, but what a perfect place, you know, for for people to live because of the proximity of the school. So but now, what was your question?
And you may or may not be able to answer this, um, but this is just my mind thinking and growing up in this town. Um. What? For for to get into your rentals and with the way the economy is right now and people are struggling. How much of an effect does one's uh, credit report have on this? Because would this allow people that may not have great credit? Because nowadays, there's a lot of people that are struggling that don't have great credit.
Mm hmm.
Would that prohibit them? Because.
Well, actually, those that don't have the best credit will not be able to buy their own home.
Yes.
Okay, this gives them an opportunity. Do we look at credit scores? Yes, we do. One of the other things that our property manager looks uh, upon too, is do you have any rental history? And so, you know, if we can call where they've been renting before and they say, yes, they're eligible to rent again, you can't say a whole lot, but you can say that. Are they eligible to rent again? They say, yes, that means a whole lot more to us than than anything else. But to your point, it actually gives them an opportunity where. You know, for people to save enough for a down payment to buy a home, it's a struggle. So for a lot of them, they get into our units where, again, they're they're fully, the maintenance is all on us. They don't have to worry about that hot water heater going out or something happening and then they get hit with that big item. And it's really hard for them to afford it. Once they get this into their budget, you know, we we have some people, some of our units, they've been there fifteen and eighteen years. And they don't plan on going anywhere. And we like that. We think it, we think that that's a testament to how we take care of people. You know, you take care of us, you pay your rent and you're you're good tenants. Uh, now, I will tell you that. You know, also sometimes credit scores will also tell you a little bit about the quality of tenant that you're gonna get. So we do have to consider that too, but that's why we call and ask about, are they eligible? Because sometimes they may have paid their rent on time, but let's just say if if they didn't keep the their yard clean and they were. You know, caused problems with neighbors and the police were out there a lot, that's, that's when your folks would probably say, no, they're not eligible to rent again. But. Um, I think we provide that opportunity for those that maybe are in that position where they can't afford their own home or an excellent option for them.
Okay, thank you.
Further answer your question, there's no program, there's nothing to do with our RID or MIH that has anything to do with someone's credit. That's completely up to ownership and man.
Mm hmm. Thank you.
Let's make a motion quick before.
Hey, that's, that's up to the council. That is, I, I can't do that.
I'll make the motion to approve ordinance fifteen twenty.
Second.
Is it fifteen twenty or fifteen nineteen?
Fifteen twenty.
Twenty.
Okay. Okay, sorry. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Julie?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Motion passes three oh. Thank you, guys, for coming. Next order of business. Jess, you ready? Uh, you just saw what happened. Uh, we need to, first, we need to close the hearing for RHID from Maplewood Place. Can I get a motion and a second? And a vote to close that meeting or hearing?
I motion to close the hearing.
Second.
And moved and seconded, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you. We're gonna make you proud. We won't let you down.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next order of business, ordinance fifteen nineteen, conditional use one oh four tenth street for commercial kitchen. Jess.
Whoa, again, uh, yeah, so we are here, Brad and I, one oh four tenth street. Uh, we own Flatlanders Pizzeria. Um, we have added an additional kitchen to our residence so that we can do prep for our um, food truck. Uh, we have worked with the health inspector already and had that approved. Um, we've talked with Russ, we met with the zoning and codes. And they were okay with everything, so we're just hoping that it will go right through.
Yes, are you planning on uh, possibly renting out the kitchen for other people?
No, no, it's strictly um, set up for um, it's specifically a dough room. We have a six hundred pound floor mixer. So really, it's a room for the mixer and then to be able to wash the mixer.
I know there's a need for that in town.
I know there is, yeah, but unfortunately, we don't have the equipment that most other.
Yeah, okay, good to know.
And we also won't be selling from our house, so there won't be any additional traffic to our neighbors. We've talked with all of our neighbors. Everyone is. More than um, happy with the way it's set up.
Good.
All right, thanks, Jess.
Thank you.
Still? I know you're itching to get up and talk.
So uh, if if they're building in thirty days, we haven't seen any permit applications on that RID deal.
I think it'll be longer than thirty days.
Okay. Just checking.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty confident it'll be longer than thirty days.
So the ordinance fifteen nineteen, uh, conditional use permit for commercial kitchen at one oh four tenth street. Uh, planning commission had considered a request on September ninth where they had an unanimous approval. My understanding is that it's a. Dough room facility. Uh, my understanding is that they had an approval from the Douglas County Health Department. I don't physically have that with me now, but that's my understanding. Um, they would still need to file a standard building permit and go through the city inspection. This is a permit to use conditional. You still get a small building permit and take those steps. And they would more than likely get a visit at some point in time from Zach, from the Kansas Food Code. Everything should be fine, so that the city zoning and planning has has no issue with it. So hopefully you'll pass it.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to this agenda item? I don't have one other person in the audience, chief.
You couldn't say anything if you didn't want to be.
Yeah, I can't hear you. Council discussion.
I don't see any drawbacks from having it. I think uh, Jess has been a business owner in town for a long time. I I think it's a good move for her. Both of you, Brad.
Yeah, I would just add, I think they've taken the proper steps and I think, you know, they've been in the community. they've been in the community forever and so, and all the other commissions that they've had to go through have approved it. So I don't, there's no reason why I think we should stop it. I think it's a great thing. So.
I agree.
I agree.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept ordinance number, uh, fifteen nineteen.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Julie?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Jeez.
Alright.
Jay's a yes, Amber.
Nope.
Got it all out of his system. Alright, motion passes three oh. Alright, council committee reports, budget and finance, Cory.
We have not met since the last meeting and I don't know if we have anything coming up here for a bit.
I don't think so. Not that I'm aware of. To be determined on the next meeting for budget and finance. Uh, community development, Cory?
Yeah, we did meet. Um, we had the food truck ordinance on the agenda, um, and that was discussed and we just heard the request. So, um, no other, no other, uh, agenda items on there. In our next meeting, it's kind of contingent on whether or not we hear back from the city attorney. Um, I was hoping to move it up to the twelfth, or I'm sorry, the eleventh, um, to avoid the Monday after Maple Leaf. No, the, the standing meeting is the twenty-fifth, so it wouldn't be the Monday after Maple Leaf. But I was, I, I, in the meeting, um, pledged to, uh, have more urgency on the agenda item and this is still our only rolling agenda item. So, um, pending, uh, a response back on a question we have from the city attorney. I would say the next meeting I'm going to set for the eleventh. I'm, I'm looking at the wrong month again. I'm clear back and oh my gosh. The thirteenth is the meeting I would like to set it for. This is the following Monday and then the twenty-seventh is what it's scheduled for. But I would like to move it up to the thirteenth. And, um, I'll wait till I hear back, um, in the next couple of days before I send out the emails moving that meeting. So tentatively the thirteenth, officially on the schedule, the twenty-seventh.
Public safety, Jay?
Uh, we have not met since the last time, um, and looking at the calendar, I do not see, uh, that Susan has set a date for the next meeting yet. So, um, when I get with Susan, we will get a meeting date set for that. Chief, do you, have you heard?
I don't think she.
I don't think we have, but.
It's that typical rolling day or same whatever.
But I know we've, the eleventh, okay, so October the eleventh. November, November, okay, November eleventh.
Eleventh and Saturday.
Yeah.
Okay. November eleventh at what is it?
Four o'clock and second floor of city hall.
Uh, public works, Julie?
Uh, we have not met either. Um, we were to meet this Thursday. Uh, the, uh, public works guys have a benefit meeting that they have to go to. So we're going to change it to the sixteenth. So October sixteenth will be our next meeting. And again, that's at the public works building. Um, however, I do have an update on the substation, uh, that Jeff sent to me. So I give you that information. All the concrete foundation work is complete. The switchgear building is up and it's to be insulated today and will likely have the interior sheeting finished tomorrow. Transformer is set and has been tested after shipping. Transformer grading, uh, was completed by our crews and we'll be sending, we will be sending to a galvanizer to be dipped. Don't ask me what that means, but that's what he said. Um, midstates crews, uh, continue to dig and install conduit to the outside of the perimeter, uh, where the fence will be installed and our crews have assisted with that. The ETA for switchgear is February of twenty twenty-six. Uh, Pat continues to bid and order materials for the thirty-four point five KV line and all the feeder lines. Pat also can, uh, contacted a couple of companies to bid on all or some of the, uh, installation of the thirty-four point five and the feeder lines and we're still waiting for those bids. Uh, Jeff says he believes the project has gone fairly smoothly at this point and he thinks that partnering with KMEA and midstates was a great decision. And our next, um, our next meeting is the sixteenth.
Alright, thank you. Go back right back to your strategic planning.
I, uh, I have no idea. Scott hasn't notified me of, he was gonna, uh, set something up, but I haven't heard from him.
Uh, lake advisory committee, Jay?
Um, yeah, we actually met tonight and our next meeting is set for October twenty-first at six PM in the, at the Baldwin Community Center. So, um, we've been talking about a lot of things. Um, we got a couple, we got a new, a new bid to possibly fix the spillway. Um, so we're going over that right now and, um, we're looking into some grants to help us out with that as well. Um, and, um, when we, and those, we can start applying for those grants hopefully by the first of the year. And, um, then we are also working on upgrading the disc, disc golf, golf course with their driving platforms. Um, and we're looking how to, um, finance that as well, um, and raise money for that. One option we're looking into is maybe sponsorships for holes. So to help pay for the concrete. And the city is going, the city public works department is, um, going to help, um, with that project and, um, clean up the trail openings to, uh, possibly get those open, um, if all the projects get completed. And then the bridge that has fallen into the lake, once it is, once it freezes a couple of times, the public works department is going to work on getting that bridge out of the lake. So, um, we've been meeting for about five months and we're, we're making headway. It's slow, but, um, we're just trying to do our due diligence and make sure it's what the community wants and it's done how the community wants it done. Um, so got a great committee there. Uh, thank you for letting me talk about it. It's the first time we've got to talk about it. So, yep, that's it.
Uh, communications committee, they are gone, so I'll give a brief update. Had the first, uh, communications committee two, three weeks ago, I believe, um, mainly introductions, started kind of quasi discussing kind of where it's going. So it's still kind of in the fluid phase of that committee. Uh, they intended to meet this Friday, but, uh, with two of the council members out of town, that, that's going to get postponed hopefully to just next week. But, um, but right now that committee has met. They are starting to take shape and, and hopefully a policy will be coming from you guys the first part of the year. Uh, staff comments? Uh, the only comments I'll have is back to the food truck ordinance. Um, so I mean, we can, if the council wishes, we can take a look at putting it to public health and safety. Doesn't, doesn't matter to me what, it's kind of whatever the council wants to do. Um, or if it, it's hard for me because Susan's the chair of that committee and she's not here tonight. So I don't want to, you know, without discussing it with her, I don't want to throw something. I mean, we've done that before, so, um, we, we can, um, but I guess I want council feedback on that. Or do we want to set up a separate committee, standalone committee, what?
It doesn't matter to me. We're at the finish line on this thing. We're just waiting on, on feedback from, uh, the city attorney on the mock ordinance that we basically sent out. So, I mean, I think that's where a little bit of the frustration is. It's, I think honestly, we're pretty close on it, but I could, it does not matter to me one bit what direction it goes. But once you go to a different committee and have a different set of eyes on it, that's fine.
I, yeah, I don't know. Um, what's the reasoning behind, um, changing?
I presume you're asking Jess. Okay, yeah. We've never had that type of request, so that's, I think it's new to us.
The only reason I was asking to move it was specifically because when we started the discussion over a year ago, it was brought to the council and to the public as it was a health and safety concern. So I just always thought that it should have been in that committee. Um, and then, but we've been working and again, it just, it, it really, like Cory said, it just hasn't gone anywhere. We've been two city attorneys and now we've been holding on to the original, um, uh, the orig- original proposed ordinance, I think is what you guys called it, um, that was set up originally by Dakota. So two city attorneys ago and it's just been, well, one and now we're on to a second, a city attorney, yeah. Um, but it just seems like if it really was a main issue for health and safety, then in a year we really would have made some progress. So that was my only, if that's what the concern was, then I thought it might get moved further if it really was directed as health and safety and not a matter of how much the fees are, where we're set up, so much as if it's health and safety, let's get it there and maybe it would move quicker because it would be more impactful for the community because we're addressing health and safety versus fees, where we set up, what hours, that's sort of different. So that's why I was asking.
No, that's fair. Yeah, yeah.
I can understand that, yeah, it's, it's been going on for a long time. So.
And again, I've, I mean, whatever I could do, I came to city council three years ago when we originally made that move. And I said, when we're ready, we're here, we want to help. You know, we would like to bring, you know, food trucks, but not oversaturate our community, bring what the community is looking for. And so it just, it originally started as health and safety. And so I thought if we could move it back to there.
I don't see any, any reason not to.
Started off as health and safety because that's how the conversation started. Then it was that we don't even have an ordinance. And that was where, so it, it, it's the, it's the implementing of an ordinance that is the major concern now. Health and safety is what raised eyebrows.
Can I?
Sure.
Um, I do know that before health and safety, before food truck ordinance, it was, um, food trucks have been setting up in town for fifteen plus years. And before, when we ever had to have some sort of, uh, permit, it went through a peddler's license.
Right.
Which again is basically health and safety. You fill it out one time, you say what your product is, who the contact people are, you provide all that information upfront. So we had talked about moving it back into a peddler's license, but then you guys said it didn't really qualify in your minds as a peddler's license.
Yeah, qualified. That's the same thing. We, an ordinance is needed because the peddler's license from our city attorney said that, that it.
Well, and that's what Dakota said, but we never got confirmation from our current city attorney, which is what we've been waiting for for almost a year. That's the only reason I was like, can we move it?
Jay thoughts?
I don't, I mean, I think, I think everyone would like to see a resolution. If it is, if it was brought up as public, as safety, I mean, it would make sense to move it, but, um, I'm not opposed to it going to pub, to the safety committee or having like a subcommittee of a food truck committee. And I would be okay with chairing it if that was to take it off people's plate, if that's a concern. Um, but I mean, if it's, if it's for the health and safety, it would make sense to move it. But if it's more about the fees, then, I don't know.
I'm fine. I mean, committee is a committee to me, so, um, I'm good moving it over there. Let me talk to Susan though before I give like, okay, we're going to, just because as the chair of the committee, I want to give her the, I, I guess the respect.
Option to say no.
Well, yeah, not really, but, um, but yeah, let me discuss that. But I think, I mean, from what I'm hearing from everybody is they're okay with moving it over to the public safety if it's about public safety. So, um, yeah, I mean, as as far as I'm concerned, yeah.
I can do to provide the information. I know that, you know, again, we've been.
Susan's been on that committee too, so.
Yeah, both sides. And I know that like you guys have tried and it just, it's been, it hasn't come to fruition yet.
Yeah, yeah. So yeah, we'll move it over to public safety as long as Susan's okay with it.
Okay, thank you.
Her reach out to everybody. Okay, um, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session with myself, uh, city council and then the city attorney. We by Zoom for the purposes of discussing non-elected personnel as attorney-client privileged matter. Um, for fifteen minutes until, until eight twenty.
I make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. All opposed, nay. Motion passes.